Yeah, I hear him.
Break it out?
Yeah.
Okay.
February 26th Village Board Meeting to Order. Would you please stand and join in the Pledge Allegiance to be led by Trustee McClafferty?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands one nation, united in a visible liberty and justice forever.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Kwasniewski?
Here.
Maher?
Here.
McClafferty?
Here.
Snagowski?
Here.
Stapleton?
Here.
Blitzer?
Here.
Okay, great. Before we get into the consent agenda, we had one change, correct, George, to the agenda?
Correct, yeah. We had... Under Resolutions, item number two, we're gonna be pulling this from the agenda. This is the Cooperative Fishing Agreement from, between the Village of Lamont and the Department of Natural Resources. This was before a Cooperative Fishing Agreement for the Heritage Quarry Area. We're not gonna lose a whole lot of time in delaying this project. The state was gonna help us out with a free program, innovative program, to help us manage our fishery and wildlife in the quarry area. They would help survey, they would stock the, potentially work with us on stocking the quarry area, and we're still gonna do this. But the developer of the Forge Lamont Quarry Project, that's the outdoor recreation park that's gonna be going in and it's going through the planning process right now near the quarry area, has asked for us to kinda have another meeting with the state to ensure that there's no conflicts between the private development and the public fishing that's gonna be allowed and eventually regulated by the state with the village. So, we're not losing any time. As long as we approve the agreement by early summer, we should be able to get into the 2019 program. So, just being cautious and ensuring that everything fits together with private, public, and everything going on in the quarry area. So, that is gonna be removed from the agenda.
Okay, great. Alright, so we'll move on. Next up on the agenda is the consent agenda, which will consist of the approval of minutes from the January 22 Village Board Meeting, minutes from the January 25th and 26th Strategic Planning Session, as well as minutes from the February 12 Committee of the Whole. Also on the consent agenda is our approval of dispersments, an ordinance amending the Lamont Municipal Code, Chapter 5.04, Section 5.04.080, alcohol, beverages decreasing the number of A2 liquor licenses and increasing the number of A3 liquor license. Also on the consent agenda is a resolution reviewing the need for confidentiality of closed session meetings. Resolution providing for the destruction of certain verbatim recordings of closed session meetings. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Trustee Blitzer, seconded by Trustee Kwasniewski. Any questions? Comments? Roll call, please.
Kwasniewski?
Yes.
Maher?
Yes.
McClafferty?
Yes.
Snagowski?
Yes.
Stapleton?
Yes.
Blitzer?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. I guess I have to say motion approved, so it's official, right?
Official.
Alright. Moving on, Mayor's Report. We have a proclamation for Commander Greg Smith, who has accepted the Chief of Police at the Village of Beecher. Congratulations, Greg. And he will be... Greg, unfortunately, will be leaving Lamont at the end of this month, but our loss will be Beecher's gain. So, again, Greg, congratulations. For Greg, we have a proclamation for him. I need a motion to approve the proclamation?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Trustee Blitzer, seconded by Trustee McClafferty. Greg, if you can please join me down at the podium. And Greg, thanks so much. Twenty-seven years.
Twenty-seven years.
Twenty-seven years of Village of Lamont. Have a proclamation for you here. Whereas on April 8, 1991, Commander Gregory Smith began his law enforcement career with the Village of Lamont Police Department. And whereas during his tenure, Commander Smith is recognized for enhancing the overall performance of the Lamont Police Department. Commander Smith worked as a patrol officer, a detective, and sergeant prior to his promotion to commander on December 1, 2006. He was responsible for the day-to-day operations of the police department, coordinating and evaluating all patrol and investigative functions. And whereas Gregory Smith during his career with the Lamont Police Department received multiple commendations, division citations, and merit awards. He also received the Cook County Sheriff Award for merit. And whereas is credited with planning and overseeing such events and programs as Cop on Top, Cops and Kids, Emergency Vehicle Night, Lamont Prescription Drug Takeback Program, the Lamont Adjudication Process, Traffic Safety Officer Program, and Children with Special Needs Open House. He also created the Traffic Safety Committee and established an awards committee for the department. And whereas Commander Smith was active in several organizations, including the Federal Bureau of Investigation, National Academy Association, the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police, the Salsiburban Cook County Chiefs Association, the Illinois Tactical Officer Association, the Illinois Law Enforcement Alarm System, the Illinois Law Enforcement Challenge, and promotional assessor with Standard and Associates. Greg, you did a lot, man.
Yes, sir.
He was elected by his peers as President of the Police Chiefs Association of Will County in 2016. And whereas Gregory Smith has supported the goals and contributed to the enhancement of the Lamont Police Department by his many years of law enforcement experience and dedicated service, and will retire, of course, in not only good standing but great standing from the Lamont Police Department on April 9, 2018, after 27 years of service. Now therefore, I, John Snagowski, Mayor Lamont, on behalf of the Village Board and trustees and the entire community hereby acknowledge the contributions that Commander Gregory Smith has made to the Lamont Police Department and the citizens of Lamont during his long and successful career in law enforcement, and wish him continued success and much congratulations as he progresses his new law enforcement career as Chief of Police in the Village of Beecher. Abby's gonna come down and shower you with some...
The Village Board and staff wanted to give you some tokens of our esteem and appreciation. So, based on some suggestions, I made the long trek, super long trek to Beecher. Have you been there? So, it was a nice day to take a long drive, and the first place we went to was their golf course. Very nice people. In addition to what we bought you, you have a free golfer two coming from the manager there.
Excellent, thank you.
And they're very excited to have you, and I got a free beer out of it, so it's worth the drive, man, so thank you. And they gave me business cards for everyone, so apparently we're all supposed to come out and go golfing. So, and then a couple restaurant tickets. One quick kind of cute story, maybe? The person at the restaurant said, "Oh, it's somebody from Lamont." I thought it would be one of the guys who've been here for a long time.
Oh, great.
So, I'm like, "Oh, looking forward to that." And the manager of the golf course, back to the good part, threw in some golf balls and tees for you that say Cargill Creek on there, so I thought that was very nice. And if you see the item in the middle, which I'm not gonna mention, but it starts with Jack and ends with Daniels, is based on, again, a recommendation, so I hope you will enjoy this. It's a model ticket, in case you win, you don't even need to take that yet. So, I hope you enjoy this basket, and there's a card here from all of us, too, and we're going to miss you, so.
I just wanna take a couple minutes to thank Mayor, the Village Board, our Village Administrator, George. You know, it's been a, it seems like a quick 27 years that just flew by. And I'm not leaving the state. You know, if anybody needs anything, you know, it's the citizens, anybody here, please pick up the phone and call Commander Tully. But I just wanted to say thank you, and I'll be around for a couple more days, and I hope to see you guys. If you need anything, please give me a call.
Okay, alright. Next up, would like to thoroughly thank the Public Works Department, Ralph. Your group did a great job. Obviously, we fed quite a bit of... No proclamation, though.
He just wanted that jack.
We fed, you know, quite a bit of snow. You wouldn't know, it's all melted. But again, Ralph, thanks to you and your department for doing a great job getting the streets cleared. Obviously, you guys have a process that you follow. You have to get the main streets completed. You're up against time. Side streets and cul-de-sacs sometimes are obviously near the end, especially when we're under heavy snow. So, with that in mind, we also would like to thank the residents of Lamont for understanding this process, as many neighbors were helping each other out and shoveling sidewalks and the driveways, you know, during this busy time. So, again, it's an effort by everyone in the community. We also wanna thank the business owners as well. You know, business owners, we appreciate their understanding and keeping their sidewalks clean. Again, any efforts you can show or help with us during, you know, these heavy snowfalls is much appreciated. And also keeping the sidewalks clean for the school kids as well. So, again, thanks, Ralph, to you and your group. Also, the State, the Village Address will be held Wednesday, March 7, at Crystal Grand Banquet. So, you can register to attend on the Chamber's website. On Saturday, March 10, it is our annual St. Patrick's Parade in downtown. It's at 1:00 PM. This year's queen is a senior at Lamont High School. Her name is Ms. Evelyn Conway. Had a chance to communicate her award to her. Very nice young lady. We congratulate Ms. Conway, and we look forward to her leading us off on our parade on March 10. Also, our Lamont Environmental Advisory Commission will hold their Spring Recycling Day on April 14, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Metro Lot. And last but not least, registration is open for the Quarryman Challenge, 10 miles in the 5K run. It's on May 12. They always need volunteers as well, so visit the Quarryman website. The Quarryman website is quarrymanchallenge.com, correct? Okay. Alright, before we wrap up this section, like to open it up to audience participation. Would anyone like to speak? Yes, alright, Jerry.
Hello, Gerald Johnson, Fifth Street, Lamont. I have two things. In the little book here, the little history of Lamont, there's about Fridley and his invention, the stamped metal ceiling, you know, and its side walls and stuff, and it's a lot of it in town. And it is historic to Lamont, historical downtown Lamont. I noticed that on Huey's Irish Pub, they ripped it all out, and I went bonkers, and I called up the Historical Society, I called the village, and they said, "That's only covered, historical is only covered on the outside, but it is historical to Lamont." I think we should look into something about stopping the wholesale tear-out of the invented by Mr. Fridley of downtown Lamont on Cass Street, and see if we can stop doing that in the future, please. Item number two, we need somebody to turn on the audio on our commission meetings. The last planning and zoning meeting, I don't know who the gentleman was, he was in here for something, but I couldn't hear a word he said, because there was no mic on at the time. And a couple of our commissioners are hard to understand also. So, and I don't know how the other commission meetings are, but I think we should turn up the sound, or have somebody with a key come by and open the door and flip the switch, or, you know, say it's underneath the carpet or something, and so they can turn it on.
We're gonna get Jason a key.
Thank you, I'll take it.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you for that suggestion.
Jason's been here long enough, I think you deserve a key. We'll get you a key.
We trust you now, Jason. Any other one from the audience? Okay. Alright, that wraps up that section. Moving on to the Clerk's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For correspondence, early voting for the March 20, 2018 Guber National Primary Election is March 5 through the 19. You can vote early at our Lamont Township Building on Warner Avenue, and you can also go to cookcountyclerk.com, their website, for times and other locations where you can vote. And I'm on to the resolutions. Resolution R418, approving the capital improvement program for the Village of Lamont for fiscal year 2019.
Okay, need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Trustee McClafferty, seconded by Trustee Blitzer. Chris?
Thank you. I'll start it off and then turn it over to Ralph, and eventually, Chris, if there's anything else to add. The Village Staff and Board have been going through our fiscal 1819 budget development process over the last several months. We will be having two public hearings in the month of March on the full budget, March 12 and March 26, here at the Board Meeting, so you could take a look at our budget, which will be available online at the end of this week or early next week. Make any comments on the budget or any other items you want to include in the budget discussion. What we've done the last, I think, two or three years, we've liked, we've started off with the capital planning. Eventually, this is the first formal step in the budget development process, is talking about our larger capital projects, and when we talk in March, we'll put it all together, and eventually in April, both the capital and the operating budget gets put together and presented for approval at the Board. That'll be at the April 9 meeting. We like to start the capital project budget first, primarily to have authorization from the Board to put larger projects out to bid. Any construction project over 20,000 typically has to be put out to bid, and these are our roads, water main projects, so we like to get authorization from the Board so that we can put out to bid, and hopefully beat other projects out, so we get favorable bids and we can adjust accordingly on the fly. So, I'll turn it over to Ralph here soon to talk about some of the larger projects. Again, this is the first formal step in the budget. We will talk about all these again in March, along with the operating items. One quick item before I turn it over, and eventually before the Board votes, I'll need a motion, maybe after Ralph's update, to amend this resolution. Two minor changes I'd like to include, and a little bit of a, probably a typo in the budget. The road program this year, I think we had 850 or $950,000. That should be reduced to 500,000. I sent out an email to the Board earlier today. Again, we won't, we won't know exactly how much the road program's gonna be till it's bid out, but 500 is the funding that we have available to us right now until we can identify additional resources. The other quick item that I wanted to include, I know Trustee Maher and I have been talking about, the village issued that two years ago for water main extension, as long, as well as a new water tower and potentially a new well if needed by the time of construction of the tower. I think in 19, we wanna start with some initial engineering, so I did add 50,000 into the fiscal 19 budget, which, again, we will talk about again in March, just to have authorization from the Board to work with our consultant to do some investigation on, you know, potential land purchases, and when we have a little bit more information, we can come back and amend the budget accordingly. So, those are two changes. I'll ask for a motion, but first I wanna start with Ralph. You wanna go through some of the larger projects that we have included in the budget?
Sure, sure. Thank you, George. First off, we have the well, our much-needed renovation of the metro station. Metro is funding that through the village. We are, we are taking over that responsibility as far as the whole project. The construction will not start until after May 1. We still have to put that job out to bid. We have three smaller water main replacement projects. One on Freehoff Street from Schultz to Houston, one on McCarthy Road from Wheeler to First Street, and then Walter Street from 127th to Wend. Those are water mains that are, we've had many leaks on lately, and those need to be replaced. Our resurfacing program, we're gonna do some resurfacing in Rolling Meadows subdivision. We have Eureka on the list, and Oak Lane and Oak Court. And we will be doing some engineering on Florence for the 2019 year for a water main replacement. So, those are the big, big-ticket items for this year for capital improvements. Oh, wait, also the islands at the metro station as well. The brick pavers that line New Avenue, those are all buckled up, and we plan on replacing those with permeable pavers to satisfy the MWRD with this Safety Village Going Green Initiative. So, we'll be replacing those pavers as well. Thank you.
And Ralph, just the bigger ticket items, like State Street, that's the following year?
Following year, yes.
And Main, McCarthy?
Oh, McCarthy Road, I'm sorry. Yeah, McCarthy Road, we'll be resurfacing that from Illinois to Barton with bike lanes on both sides of McCarthy Road, six-foot bike lanes. That project is gonna go through Phase 2 engineering this year with construction in 19.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Anything else? We good? Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
I'd like to add a comment here. So, on the budgets, there's two things that I appreciate in future cows, in near-term cows, is that one, that we get a little, go through a little bit more planning on the elevated tank and well. I think we had, we had a pretty good discussion at the cow a couple weeks ago, and I think there's still a lot of open items. And as we go into budgeting this year, I'd like to make sure that we have a pretty good plan on what we're gonna do, especially since, from a responsibility perspective, since we do have a bond that's already issued on this. So, that's one request that we do in the next couple weeks. And then, obviously, after our budget cycle's done this year, I'd like us to start going in and talking about the Fifth Street. I know that's next year, starting the planning, but I think we have a lot of tactical discussion we need on how that's really going to get funded and the appropriate way of funding. The Fifth Street, I think it's first, it's really, I think, part of First, Fifth, and I think there's three streets associated with trying to get water down, right?
Six.
Six, Fifth?
Sixth, Fifth, Sixth.
And I think, I think what I'd like is, before we go into next year, that we actually have a discussion on how we plan on funding such a project. I think it's an important project. Obviously, obviously, it's a planning phase for next year, but there's significant funding discussions before we should, that I think we can actually have a plan before we go into actually the engineering on it.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, Trustee. I think that what we'll do to follow up on some strategic planning sessions that we've been having with the Board is make that a strategic initiative, so we can put that into the planning. Originally, I think there's one project that came in front of the Board last year for a variation on Fifth, but when we looked at that project, which didn't have a water utilities at the site, we also evaluated that there's several streets that don't have, that are underserved. So, that's something we'll put in as an initiative to move forward. And the other thing I think would be beneficial at a future cow, maybe not even into next year, maybe right after budget season, is to have our consultant that we worked with on our water analysis. So, we had a consultant come out and look at our demand, supply for our water system, and a projection, looking at, you know, population analysis. I think it'd be a good time, maybe, have them come back out and present to the Board the updated PowerPoint, and also with that, maybe an amendment to the study, like Ralph and I were talking about, looking at four or five different potential sites and how they work with a potential tower and well. So, we'll do that right after the budget season so that we can keep momentum going.
So, my comment was to try to do it during the budget season, so we're making sure we're allocating enough money into the budget for this year. So, that's where I'm hoping it is, not after we're done with it. Because you talked about doing an amendment, right? We can do an amendment, and so I wanna make sure we understand what our real impacts is.
Yep.
Because I think there was a lot of open questions that didn't get answered at the last cow.
Okay, we'll bring that up in March. I'm not sure we get the consultant out here, and we got, you know, other budgetary items to go through. But, yeah, we'll talk about it in March, and if the consultant's unable to make it, it can come out after budget season.
Thank you.
And before we do roll call, we do, we need to make, if someone could make a motion on those two minor changes to the resolution.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Trustee Maher, seconded by Trustee McClafferty. All approved? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion approved. Okay, so, roll call on the capital, the capital plan?
Kwasniewski?
Yes.
Maher?
Yes.
McClafferty?
Yes.
Snagowski?
Yes.
Stapleton?
Yes.
Blitzer?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Alright, next is Resolution R518, approving a professional service agreement with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly Incorporated.
Okay, need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Trustee Kwasniewski, seconded by Trustee Blitzer. Ralph?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Village of Lamont has two overflow sites for our combined sewer system. One goes into the Sanitarian Ship Canal, and one goes into the I&amp;M Canal. When our combined system charges, those overflows occur. So, to do that, to be legal in doing that, we have to have a permit through the IEPA. That's where this comes in. We need to have a professional service company, such as Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly, which we've been working with for the last five years on this, do research, identify areas where this is happening, and fill out the proper paperwork, and turn it into the MWRD and the IEPA. So, staff recommendation is to approve the agreement not to exceed $45,500 for 2017 with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly. And just so you know, guys, this is going to be a fairly large ticket for the next five, six years. We can talk about that in other cows, though.
Does anyone have any questions or comments for Ralph?
It's gonna be same dollar amount, we're talking for the next five years?
No. Oh, it might increase. When it comes to identifying the areas and what needs to be done to fix the problems, the actual cost could go up.
So, so once the study is complete, we can update our capital plan?
Right, and this is a moving target as well with the IEPA and MWRD. It seems that the rules change more often than they stay the same, so that number can fluctuate.
Mostly tightening.
True.
True.
Thank you, Ralph.
Thank you.
Alright, can we have a roll call?
Kwasniewski?
Yes.
Maher?
Yes.
McClafferty?
Yes.
Snagowski?
Yes.
Stapleton?
Yes.
Blitzer?
Yes.
Motion approved.
And the last resolution is R618, authorizing award of contract for Chestnut Crossing Lift Station generator replacement.
Okay, need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Trustee Stapleton, seconded by Trustee Blitzer. Ralph?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a resolution to replace the generator at the Chestnut Crossing Lift Station, which is at Archer Avenue and 135th. This station takes a lot of flow from Target Coals Ravines and pushes it up toward Oak Tree down Archer Avenue. It's about 22 years old. It's about twenty-two years old, and the generator is now nickel and diming us with the, it, it just needs to be replaced. And we've put it out for bid, and there was one bidder, and it's, it's a very tough job. And we didn't realize when we did the estimate that the station needed to be running while the work was to be completed. We thought we could shut it down for a while, but it needs to be running while it's done. So that's why we have the twenty-two thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollar overage. There was extra wiring and switches they need to use and plugs to use, but it's a very tough job. And Elliott Electric comes very highly recommended by Metropolitan Pump, which works with this kind of deal all the time. We've worked with Metropolitan for many years and they recommended Elliott for this job. So staff, staff recommendation is to accept the amount of eighty-two thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars for the Chestnut Crossing replacement generator. Thank you, sir.
Okay, and Ralph, just to be clear, it's, what you're saying, it's not necessarily an overage, it was just because the understanding was that it did not need to run and it needs to be operating.
When we put the estimate together for the budget, we didn't realize the station had to be operating while the work was done. Meeting with the contractors and talking with Metropolitan, they told us that it did, and that's what bumped the price up from that to the, to the eighty-two. So that's why the estimate is low and the bid came in higher.
So if, if a resident says, hey, why did we only get one bid? That, I mean, what's the?
No, we put it out for public bid. Only one person bid on it. It's not a very.
So it's, it's a difficult job.
It's a very difficult job, and it's specialized work.
And it sounded like our, our engineer is very comfortable with, with the person doing it, recommending?
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah, and that's one, at staff meeting we were talking about, anytime we only get one bid, we do get a little concerned, but, you know, we put it out for a bid on our website. I wanted to make sure that was on there, all the different publications that are out there, that we, we had posted in the newspaper. So we did our due diligence on getting a number of bids, correct, Ralph?
Absolutely.
And only received one.
Yeah, we don't send out personal invitations for, for bidding. I mean, we just put it, it's a public notice. So anybody can bid on it, and we just, for this particular job, we just received one bid.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, roll call.
Klasniewski?
Yes.
Maher?
Yes.
McClafferty?
Yes.
Snogowski?
Yes.
Stapleton?
Yes.
Blitzer?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Linda. Okay, moving on, the village attorney report.
A report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thanks, Andrew. Next up, village administrator report, George.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few items. I'll start with the, the more boring items and maybe more exciting at the end, economic development. But as I mentioned, we had two public hearings in March, you know, it's going to be another tough budget year. The governor came out with his projected, or what he would like to see with the budget, another ten percent cut in our L G D F, which is a significant revenue for the village. So, you know, staff's been working hard, we'll, we'll go through that in March, but the public will have two opportunities, twelfth and the twenty-sixth. If you can't make those meetings, you can also come on the nineteenth, when we're going to be discussing it with the board and, and a committee, the whole meeting on the twelfth. Couple intergovernmental updates we've posted for our boundary agreement with Homer Glenn, required to post thirty days prior. Copy's available at, at Village Hall or online if you wanted to review. And that public hearing will occur on March twenty-sixth, and we will also, if there's no concerns or questions or other issues, we will also move to, to approve that agreement. Homer Glenn has motioned it up and they should be approving it later on this, this week. So good intergovernmental cooperation. We've also worked with Will County on a couple of issues related to the Homer Glenn boundary agreement, so that, that will be back in front of this board end of March. You know, we always get, we continue to get questions on the quiet zone. I've had another meeting with the manager of Romiaville. Originally, you know, I think when the mayor, we recognize if we're going to redevelop the downtown, add density potentially, that we're going to need to, long-term, look at quieting those horns, not only for the downtown, but also uptown, because many portions of town can hear the trains. We've been working with Lockport and Romiaville on a joint study. Since then, Lockport has kind of, has, has done their own quiet zone, or they're working on their own quiet zone, and now Romiaville will be breaking off as well. Just, you know, their, their improvements, Romiaville's are significantly less than ours. They have one crossing to improve, and, and we are still a couple of years away from, from truly, you know, potentially even budgeting accordingly or improving our quiet zone status, because we have five or six public crossings through the downtown. We're also going through a process of adding a crossing potentially out near Walker Road, and that will change the game a little bit on the calculations required for a quiet zone. So we are continuing to work on that project. It, it will have to wait until after a new crossing is put in, so then the numbers can, can be updated and tracked, but we are continuing to work on that, working with some engineers to ensure we move forward with that project. And once we know the costs and the timeframe, we can also talk about it come capital budget time. Another quick update, we're continuing to work the tollway on a, on a potential I three fifty-five, noise mitigation. Well, not, the, the study, the tollway has agreed to move forward with a study to look at potential mitigation for, for sound and noise out near Briar Cliff. So just a, a thank you to Representative Durkin, Senator Curran, on, on pushing that forward for us, but the tollway's been very good to work with, and we're looking forward to working with, with our residents and the tollway on, on looking at that issue again. Not, not, not on the village spending any funds, but really the tollway stepping up and, and looking at that project, so we appreciate that. Couple I dot updates, eighty-three and Main, we've been talking about this for a couple of years now. Six and a half million dollar investment I dot is making into that corner. They're going to be widening it slightly, adding a couple of turn lanes, you know, dual turn lanes in each direction. They're going to be adding bike path in, in each direction, or three of the, three of the four quadrants. There're going to be signal improvement, signalization changes, new lighting. So it's, it's a big investment at that corner. That project has been bid out and it will start end of March. Ralph and, and our police chief are going to be going down to my dot offices up in Schaumburg, or up in Schaumburg, and to, to get more information on that project. We'll get information out, it'll start in March. It'll go every bit of the, of the season, probably till the end of November, and potentially into, into next year to clean some things up. But it's a big project, it'll be a pain, but it'll definitely brighten up that corner and it will definitely help for, you know, marketing of eighty-three and Main and our, our village site. So look for our website and we'll also send some notifications out on when that's going to, we don't suspect any closures at this time, but there could be, there's going to be traffic issues and potentially rerouting.
George, I think they really started taking the trees down.
Have they really?
They've clearcut the one side already.
Yeah, so they, they are moving. Speaking of I dot, you know, we, we don't have a lot of flooding in town, and Ralph, not only on the snow, but I think over the last, we received a lot of rain the last, you know, week or two, and, you know, Ralph's department, engineering, they've done a great job. We don't have a lot of true village flooding. We had a couple of issues in Ruffel that we're working with, private issues that we're going to be working with on Ruffel Feathers. But Main Street's one of our main areas, and that's an I dot-owned road from essentially Turnabout all the way east. We, I think it was closed down for flooding on, I don't know what, what day that was now, but that project needs, needs significant, you know, drainage improvements. There's going to be a grind and overlay, and in I dot, we've been lobbying for years on getting that project going, and that will happen in fiscal twenty-one, so it could be potentially end of twenty to twenty-one, where they'll be installing culverts and do a grind and overlay. There'd be widening Main Street from essentially Fordham all the way east to the corner. So that's one of our main flood areas that we're hopeful to get, good news from I dot, that they are going to be moving on that in the, in the near future, so.
Real quick, George, you know, Ruffel Feathers, we've heard loud and clear, and Ralph, thank you for, for, you know, accelerating our, our discussions. We have to get the golf course involved. They are responsible for their ponds, and we need to make sure that, you know, we, we might have an issue coming out of limestone, we're working on that, correct? But again, the golf course, we, we have to continue to, I don't want to say pressure them, but to make sure they're, they're doing their responsibilities with their ponds. So all the residents at Ruffel, we are working with them, and when's our meeting with, with Ruffel?
Thursday.
Thursday this week.
And with that, I'll just go through a few quick economic development updates. Again, I'll, I'll be, I'll be brief here tonight. You'll be able to get these updates and many more at the mayor's state of the village next week, and that state of the village presentation will be broadcast on Channel Six, so if you're unable to make it, you can, you can see many of these updates. But just real quick, uptown, you know, the Fork and Spoon breakfast restaurant, breakfast and lunch is going to be opening up in, in April. We're excited, they've been working with the building department to, to get a breakfast place back in town. Corey Pub is, is looking also to open next month. They've had their permit in, they're doing some work, so we're excited to get the, the Boeing Alley finally backfilled. Chapains, you know, I think that this project was going pretty, pretty quickly in December, and it stalled for a little bit, but that seems to be the backfill of Chapains into a new grocery store. We had another meeting today on it. We're hopeful in March to make, to make an announcement on, on that, but some good, good news on that.
Yeah, I mean, it's part of the negotiations, they, there's ebbs and flows to it, and it's, it's back on. We heard very good news today. Again, we'll, we'll announce it when, when it's finalized.
Also uptown in that area, I know that Jason's fielded a couple of calls on Wendy's, there's interest in the Wendy's building, so these things, the old Wendy's and old other.
Hardee's.
Hardee's after Wendy's, so that's good news. We're starting to see some interest. I think things start to go in, in packages once they hear Chapains might be backfilled. So that's good news. We've also been making some calls. Other than that, eighty-three and Main, I would just, I think the, the improvements will help in marketing that site. We've made some calls, we've fielded some calls, and I hope to, over the next couple of months, to bring something to the board, potentially a mixed-use project, but on the village-owned site. We're also working with I dot on, on obtaining Old Archer, that little cutthroat road, road. So working hard on that project. Couple of things in the downtown, Wooden Paddle, they, they had some contractor issues early, but they're, they're back on track and look to open in April as well. The renovation of Amy's Pub, it's going to be a grocery store, convenience store, first floor on Stephen Street with, with some, they're going to add a floor, some rental units on the second and third floor that they're going to fix up. They're, they're close to receiving their permits, we're excited about that. The Budnik Building, I don't know if we mentioned it last meeting, that did sell, so that, that's great news. You know, seeing a dumpster out there, they're cleaning it out. We, we know a broker, we've had lunch with a couple of the brokers in the area, and they've, they've been showing potential restaurant users, diners into that first floor. That building needs a lot of clean out. I know we're talking about potentially what's in that building, could it be used for historic, you know, artifacts? But that's great news to see these properties changing, changing hands, so hopefully have more, some updates here. Peterson Hardware had another meeting today. There is a second buyer that's looking at it, there's a letter of intent on the property. That's good news, it seems to be moving pretty quick.
From the second buyer or the first one?
From the, this will be the second one, so yeah.
So the letter intends with the second?
Second one, correct, yes, yes. So that's, they're working with the village. I hope to, we hope to make some announcement here soon on, on at least bringing that to the board. I think at the very least, we are going to talk about reconfiguring our canal TIF. That TIF now, believe it or not, is, is actually around ten years old, and TIFs only go for twenty-three years, so we may need to reconfigure that TIF to, to realize its full potential. So we'll bring that up to the, to the joint review board, this board, here in the coming weeks and months. So that's, that's exciting. You know, we'll talk over the next couple of months as well on, on that project. Other than that, I think everything else on economic development, I'll, I'll real brief on the Forge, Lamont Forge Quarry Project. This is the outdoor recreation part, property near the quarry area, south of the canal. That is moving along. They met with our Heritage Corridor Committee last month and, you know, presented their plan to our new committee, so that's moving forward. They hired an architect and engineer, and they are applying through the, the I C C for a new crossing at Walker Road. So that project is moving. I, I hope by, you know, late spring, summer, we're able to bring this to the, to the full board again to talk about this project. So good news on, on that project, but other than anything else on economic development or?
No.
Lastly, and I know Commander Smith, I, I know that more would have been here, but I think you told everybody seven, seven-thirty the meeting was, so, but I just want to say, you know, thank you, Greg, on, on behalf of Village Hall staff. If you guys missed the early part of the meeting, Commander Smith is going to be going, becoming a police chief out in Beecher, so we're, we're excited. It is far away, but it's actually still Will County, believe it or not, so we do network with those guys, so we know you're not going far.
It's not that far.
We know you're not going that far. We'll be able to find you, Commander, but no, we want to thank you for all your service to Lamont. You know, that police department, I know Chief Maton, I think is in Florida vacationing, Chief Shaughnessy's probably in Vegas or something. So yeah, I feel, I got Commander Toll here for you, but no, we want to appreciate everything that you guys have done, Greg, for, for the, for the department, for the Village Hall, Public Works, everyone, you've done a great job, and, and we're going to miss you, but we know where to find you. So thank you very much, Greg, for all your, for all your service. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the agenda, board reports, I think we're good there, staff reports, no staff reports. Any unfinished or new business we need to talk about?
I got a new business item for you. This is out of left field, so it's just something, I did make a promise that I would bring it up for consideration in, in our thought process and strategies and budgeting in the future. Actually, there's two of them, John, so one I might hold off on, but the, the first one is, you know, we've talked over the past year about problems at the Lamont Historical Society, Jerry bringing this up. So I was approached by, many of you know Barb Bushman. Barb came to me and asked if I'd bring it up. I promised her I would, but I'd like to run it past the board and have you think about the potential of running a referendum. You know, we're a town of our history, and with that being said, then I want to find out what is the town's real feelings about supporting the historical society? It represents the town. When things don't go right, we seem to always gather together, raise up and, and speak out about it. So I told Barb, you know, we, we need to get that kind of thought process going and find out if the, if the people of the village are willing to support the history of Lamont. And so I don't know what it would take to get that going, it's just a thought right now, but I think it needs to be said publicly and to the board to consider that, so that's one of them. And then we've had some other talk about the development in town, about the truck traffic that's through town, and over the course of the years, the village does take over jurisdictional transfer, which would be similar to what might take place in the future on Main Street when it's reconstructed, or Illinois Street when it's reconstructed. So while the development and the, and the trucking industry is maybe a good thing for the village, along with the tax base it brings, I mean, the sales taxes it brings in, it also does, it hammers the roads, and we need to be considering how we're going to pay for that. So with that being said, one option that, that's been talked about a little bit, but again, let's get it out on the table, let's get it out in the open, let's let everybody know. Why don't we talk about a consideration for home rule, but limited in discussion to the benefit of the village? So, you know, the minute you hear home rule, everybody goes, oh, man, they want to tax the world. That's not what we're talking about. What we would be talking about is creating taxes by the users, so that the money comes back to the village, so that we have the monetary policies in place to do the repairs to our roads that, you know, are going to be beaten up by the amount of traffic that we're taking. we're taking, so you gotta take the good with the bad, but as long as we create a plan for that, we'll be, we'll be in good shape, but we gotta get ahead of it, and I think the best way to do this, get it on the table and let everybody know, somehow we gotta collect dollars, we need new revenue sources, these would be the ways to do it, so, that's it, John.
Yeah, I know, Rick, you bring up a great point, because I've, I've heard, uh, from